Six thirty and I'd like to call the public hearing on the school budget. Roll call, please.
Ms. Castellanos.
Present.
Ms. Capola.
Present.
Mr. Ford.
Present.
Ms. Gailey.
Present.
Mr. Nicholson.
Present.
Ms. Sadaway.
Present.
Mayor McGee absent.
Can we all rise for a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I open the public hearing for the FY two thousand budget. And I'd like to ask if there are any, is anyone here would like to speak in favor of the FY twenty budget? Is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of the FY twenty budget? And again, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the FY twenty budget? Okay, if not, then we will move on and I will ask, is there anybody here who would like to speak in opposition of the FY twenty budget? Is there anybody here who would like to speak in opposition of the FY twenty budget? And for the last time, I will ask, is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to the FY twenty budget? If not, then could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing of the FY twenty budget.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call Nancy.
Ms. Castellanos.
Yes.
Ms. Capola.
Yes.
Ford.
Yeah.
Ms. Gailey.
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson.
Yes.
Ms. Sadaway.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor McGee absent.
Who's in charge of the personnel subcommittee?
Okay, we're gonna move right into the Personnel Subcommittee meeting in a committee of the whole meeting for June twenty seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Roll call Nancy.
Ms. Capola, Chair.
Present.
Ms. Gailey.
Present.
And Ms. Sadaway.
Present.
Observing is Ms. Castellanos, Mr. Ford, Mr. Nicholson observing.
Is this a committee of the whole meeting?
This is this Personnel Subcommittee first.
Committee of the whole. So should we all be in attendance to the committee of the whole?
Yep, you are. You're sitting at the table, so you're in attendance. Right?
Present.
Okay. The on-the-job postings will start with A, Assistant Director of English Learner Education. Attorney Sadaway, I saw your hand up.
Thank you. I, prior to the meeting, we did receive the draft versions with the corrections that we suggested at the last meeting last week. I went over the changes that we requested and with regards to this particular posting, which is the Assistant Director of ELE, the changes were made and I don't see any other issues.
Yes, Ms. Gailey.
Last week, we met here and we went over these positions. And even though I know that they're all necessary and I think they would enhance, I was very inundated with phone calls and people talking to me after Gaila Crowley's article in The Item. And they were like, why are you spending three hundred thousand dollars on new staff in the administration building when we do not have our teacher raises? We do not have this, we do not have that. So it's, and I talked with Dr. Tutwiler about this and I told him it would be a very difficult thing for me today to make a decision on these jobs. And what I am going to request of Dr. Tutwiler next year is that we get these jobs in April, you know, so we can look them over, we can hear from our constituents, we can see, you know, your reasoning why we need these jobs. I understand why we need these jobs. But my concern is that it's a lot of money when you think you add the mob and you add all their other things that go along with their longevity and everything. We're asking, you're asking me for three hundred thousand dollars in three positions. And that's a lot of money and I know it's necessary, but I think every teacher, and I also wanted to have the class sizes for secondary, which I understand we can't get right now. And that is because a lot of the teachers in secondary are having class sizes of thirty-five times five in some cases in the high school. They would love to have teacher assistants, you know what I mean? They would love to have someone else in that classroom and help them manage those thirty-five students. So that's where I am on this and my decision will be based on how appropriate I think or how much we need this. Some of the positions, Dr. Tutwiler, I may say yes and some of them I may say no because could we go a year without that and try to put it in next year? That's where I'm coming from.
Attorney Sadaway.
I think that we should focus on each position as presented in the agenda. For this one, for the Assistant Director of English Learner Education, we're creating this position mainly to stay compliant with the Look Act.
Yes.
Would you say? Is there anyone else in this department that can be sure that the Look Act is implemented and compliant?
That's a good question. So right now, you have to bear in mind that the Office of English Learner Education is a team of three responsible for, when you include the students who have exited identification as an English learner, you're talking almost half of the student body in the Lynn Public Schools. And just because a student has exited, there are still compliance procedures that were required to engage and those are changing. So somebody's gotta lead that effort. Someone's gonna need to train people, especially as the new elevation program comes into place as we're looking to expand what I would call an equity initiative when we implement a two-way immersion program at Harrington, Fall twenty, Fall twenty twenty. These are heavy, heavy lifts and right now, for a team of three, I'm amazed at what they're able to get done, given the team being the size that it is.
And the fact that part of this position will be assistant in the writing of federal grants that would bring, that potentially could bring money back to the district and enhance the classroom experience.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Attorney Nicholson.
Thank you. And, you know, I, I thank Ms. Gailey for raising this because I think it's an important lens to view our budget and particularly with new positions, is to, the impact that we're having directly on students and what student facing. When I, so one of the, one of the documents we went through when we did the budget was that list of new positions that Kevin had put together. And one of the things I had done when looking at that is thinking about which of those positions are student facing in the classroom, interacting directly with students. And, and the number I had and running it by Kevin was, was close to ninety percent, which I think is a good sign of where our priorities are. And so I think, you know, while we have to specifically approve these new positions because they're coming before us, the vast majority of positions that we're adding in this budget are directly facing and interacting with students. So I think that's a, just to sort of, as context, as we're thinking about this, I thought that was helpful for me as I thought about it.
Thank you. Yes, Attorney Sadaway.
I make a motion to approve the job posting for Assistant Director of English Learner Education as presented in the draft before us.
Move forward to the full committee.
And move forward to the full committee, correct.
Second.
Second. Thank you.
Two seconds.
Okay, roll call, please Nancy.
Capola.
Yes.
Ms. Gailey.
Yes.
And Mr. Sadaway.
Yes.
Okay. The next one is Assistant Director of Social Emotional Learning. Yes, oh, I'm sorry Attorney Sadaway. Yes.
I, I went over this job posting as amended at a request from the last meeting. And one of the things that we wanted to do was add, the secondary language would be preferred, which I believe it has been and at the request of Ms. Gailey to also include Google. And then we wanted also to state in paragraph ten that they'll collaborate and actively pursue grants. And if you look in number ten, they switched it around, but the wording is exactly what we requested. This position, Dr. Tutwiler, I'm assuming is, it's not necessarily creating a new role, it's just correcting the role that was before us, correct?
That is correct. So should you approve this position? We will close the Program Specialist for Parent and Family Engagement and post the position that we're discussing right now for a difference of...
Six thousand, you said?
Thank you.
But for the wording, everything is, is in place based off of our last meeting from last week.
Are there any other questions? Is there somebody who would make a motion, Attorney?
I make a motion to approve the posting for the Assistant Director of SEL for Student Support and Family Community Engagement and to send it to the full committee.
Second.
Roll call, please Nancy.
Ms. Capola.
Yes.
Ms. Gailey.
Yes.
Ms. Sadaway.
Yes.
The next one is the Program Specialist, Special Education Out of District. Yes, attorney.
This one we had requested substantial edits to and we received a copy of it with the changes, which unfortunately, one part of it, and I think is important, didn't make it to the draft that's before us. So if this is brought forward, I would ask that this word be put back into the document. It's paragraph one underneath the performance responsibilities. We wanted the person to also monitor, so it would have been coordinate and monitor all special education delivery services for students in out-of-district placements during the school year and summer months. I did have a moment to talk to Dr. Tutwiler about that and he's in agreement that that wording should be in there and he's fine with it and if we do put it forward, we can request that, that edit be made prior to posting. Am I, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are there any other questions on this?
And, sorry. And just a question, just obviously for our constituents that think, that may believe that this isn't really helpful for the direct placements of students, but for this one, there's only so many numbers of students that are out of district. Was it forty-five placements, a hundred and...
Hundred and eighty-three students, forty-five separate placements.
And the, the goal is to make sure that these students are receiving the accommodations that they need, but at the same time, seeing if we can alter our curriculum or our services to then bring them back into district. And, and that would help us with our budget, correct? And allow for us to free up money to hire people?
That is correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yep, yep, that is correct.
Ms. Gailey.
So am I correct to understand, as more and more people are coming into our district and not out of district, then this job would probably fade into the wind? Close?
I mean, I, I don't know if that is, that line of, linear line of thinking would be accurate. I mean, it makes sense. You're saying would they work themselves out of a job essentially?
Um, I guess. If, if they're out, looking out of district, where I thought us, all of us were hoping that we move more and more students in district.
Yep.
And as that dwindles, then there wouldn't be a reason to have this job. Not that this person wouldn't be allowed to work with us any longer, they could do something else, so.
So I'd say from a high level, in most positions in, in the district, if there, if there isn't a need for it, then either we alter it or, or we close it. So.
That's all I wanted to know, there's a possibility of closing it.
Yes, Mr. Castellanos.
And just to, you know, kind of piggyback off that, like, so the mental, so we got, so for out-of-district placements, your, your students are impacted by poverty, mental health issues, very court-involved. So a lot of those kids that we, we have out of district are protected by law as well. So you have, the DOE has certain statutes. The out-of-district person is a good lens to have, especially when you have district of origin. So if we got, if, if, if a student becomes homeless or placed in a group home or in another city, they have, by, by law, the district of origin has to be...
Responsible.
Yeah, to comply. And that's throughout the state of Massachusetts. So it's kind of, it's a, it's a good position. I work directly with this, with these folk every day and it's a very good lens because sometimes if you don't know what you're doing and you don't advocate with other state agencies, you can, that's a big cost that could, you know, it's a very, it's a big number that actually they protect us from falling those straps. And you can see it happening every day when you work in those heavy caseloads and especially when you want to protect them, you want equity and a lot of these kids are, they're tied into IEPs and it's good to have that position, so. Appreciate the work done on that, so.
Attorney Sadaway.
And when, last week when we were here, one of the things that we had discussed was paragraph thirteen, which we asked that they change the language, which they did, where it didn't specify in-district teachers, remember? It was, we assumed that it was the out-of-district teachers that we have no power over. But if you look at that, the future for this job is to make sure that the transition of these students is also done in an orderly fashion with, with the continued supervision and direction. So I, I see, I don't see in the next, unless we get forty-seven million dollars from the state, I don't see us being able to afford to make these, these, these changes in a, as quick fashion, unfortunately. But the wording is there for, for the job as it currently is and what it may look like in the future. Can I make a motion or unless anyone else has a question?
Yeah. I think just when you, just to piggyback on what you were saying, you know, at this time, we have a space problem. So the thoughts of bringing, you know, a, a number of these back would be a problem for us at this time.
Hundred and eighty, yes.
Okay, look for a motion then.
I make, I make a motion to accept the Program Specialist for Special Education out of district with the edit to paragraph one under performance responsibilities to state coordinate and monitor all special education delivery services for students in out-of-district placements during the school year and summer months. With that edit, the permission to move forward with that and also to bring it to the full committee.
Second.
Roll call Nancy.
Ms. Capola.
Yes.
Ms. Gailey.
Yes.
Ms. Sadaway.
Yes.
Okay. And the last one is payroll, accounts payable manager, okay. My agenda is missing an A, but that's okay. We knew what you meant. We didn't have any discussion because of the title that was on there last week, so maybe at this time.
Does it, sorry. Does it make a difference that it just says payroll supervisor, but on the posting it says payroll account payable manager?
I think he's got questions. Can you repeat that?
Does it make a difference that the agenda says payroll supervisor and then the posting Oh, sorry. I take that back. Yes, so it is properly, it just, it's misspelled. I guess that's not an issue. It says manger. Are we gonna have anyone talk about it?
As you're aware, you know, there are only two of us that, in the finance department that run the whole finance department. There's a grants manager and myself are the only two people. So hopefully next year we'll be overseeing a large budget and over twenty million dollars in grants. Within this, we've done a conversion over the last year to the newer Munis module and it's really requiring someone to really, most of this job, even though I put it down as accounts payable, because there will be some oversight, but I didn't want to just put it just straight payroll because of the two departments somewhat work hand in hand. But this person, majority of their experience would be working with Munis system and payroll because right now, our goal is to really encumber payroll, which we don't do, we just pay it weekly. And there's a lot of new people in the payroll office that have only probably, I'd say, five years or less experience in working with Munis. So we need someone to be able to run reports and do a lot of the day-to-day sites, oversight of the payroll. We pay over two thousand people every week here, which is a lot of people. And my first job, I always say, is payroll is probably the most important thing we do here. And we have the teachers union here, I'm sure they would be the first to call me if there were people not being paid correctly. So this focus is every week we run batches and the other batches have to be reviewed for accuracy and everything else. So what I felt is, it's, it's really a burden on us to kind of manage this and it's just so, it's a very big system. And like I say, we have two people that are from manage, from a managerial standpoint that oversee all the finances for this district. And I, I am requesting that we have this person, majority of their work will be reporting to me on a weekly basis and reviewing the payroll, so it takes a little bit of a burden that I can do other things too, because there's other things we need to be doing as well. So that's pretty much an overview why I feel this is important. Years ago, we used to have a higher level job, but that person retired and at the same time, we were laying people off. And I said, it's not good at that point to fill a job when we were actually having a reduction in the workforce. So, you know, I've just been managing it, but I think it's time now with our new conversion that we get somebody to help assist and run the reports and do the updates and all the things that have to be done in the system at this point. So I respectfully ask that we get this, we approve this. Thank you. Any questions, I can answer them.
Attorney Sadaway.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. You know, it's, every position that has been presented to us just this last time around has seemed pretty vital to the organization. This one, you're right, people want to get paid, they want to get paid the right amount on the right, right day, so that's extremely important. When, when did the reduction take place? How many years ago for when the position was eliminated?
Probably two thousand nine.
So ten years?
Yeah.
So for the past ten years, it's been you and the finance manager doing this position?
No, the, the grants manager. Actually, the grants manager doesn't oversee the payroll, so I've been overseeing it directly.
And do you have a group of people in the department that, that prepare the payroll or is it just the two people?
Yes, we've had a lot of turnover, we've had retirees. When I got here, I had a, you know, really a good veteran staff, but we were using a different system at the time as well. With the city converted to the new Munis, citywide, I'd say a little over a year and a half ago. And it has, it's a very, it's a really good system, but it has a lot of features and, you know, you really need a lot of time on a day-to-day basis to go in and really work on this system. And I can't spend every day on this system is really the issue to go through them all. So I just want to ensure that I have someone to oversee that because to me, it's important and, and we know that we have teachers constantly, we haven't even filled all the teaching jobs because of bumping and bidding and then there're gonna be people left and there's new teachers. So there's a lot of hand-touching of people in the system and it has to be done accurately and correctly, as well as, as Ms. Gailey mentioned, like there's longevity, there's step increases, there's all these other items that have to be done. So I feel it's time that we have someone to spend a lot of time on it because I think everyone in the office, except for one person, has five years or less experience on the system, you know, even in payroll, never mind this new system as well.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Yes, Ms. Gailey.
When I opened up the mic and talked earlier, I talked about the, you know, calls that I got and the concern with monies. So on this one, I think we could wait till next year to do this. I think that if they've been in the office and working, that they should be able to do the job continuously and do it well. I just, that's how I feel about it, so.
The, just a question under finance, they're under payroll, why would you be reducing one payroll employee?
I was using that as an offset to pay for this position because this person would supervise all the people in that department. Those people just data entry. With the new Munis system, there's more that's being imported electronically through the system, so there's not as much paperwork that filters through the department. So it's gone from more of a paperwork department to more of a computer entry and managing tables and software systems, reports within the system. So that's why I feel that this is, would be a position of a supervisory position of over that department versus just a payroll person. We had, you know, somebody leave and I just didn't fill the job with the new system because we're able to still get everything in, but it's the day-to-day operation and it wouldn't be the responsibility of a payroll person that would enter payroll to be overseeing all the systems that we're utilizing. So this cost would be probably, I would say, probably cost, the net would probably be about maybe twenty thousand dollars.
And I think you answered this before, but, okay, it's, we're cutting one payroll person and we're always also cutting one clerical? I think you explained that before.
Yes, that was the, the person, the person that, when that job, that person, when we didn't fill the person, they were there, pretty much their direct secretary, so we left that person in place. And then when the accounts, the accounts receivable or the accounts payable department person retired, the person moved, that had that position moved into that and some of those jobs were kind of absorbed within that as well as through the new Munis system. So again, a lot of the paperwork that we do on a day-to-day basis is a lot less because it's more, it's computerized now. All the purchase orders are all completely done through Munis. The only thing we're uploading would be, you know, three quotes and some W nines and things of that nature are scanned and sent into the system. So a lot of that other work has disappeared and I merged that with that position. So we actually counted the two positions of a reduction and actually this would be saving us money by doing this.
That's a question.
Yes, Attorney Sadaway.
Why in this role, unlike the other roles, that... Why in this role, unlike the other roles that were presented today, does it say that the individual will report to the school business administrator? But then in paragraph 10, it says that they're also gonna report to the deputy superintendent and the superintendent with regards to performing any and all duties at the request of those.
Well, we've always shared responsibilities. It's kind of just a crossover. Sometimes there's some requests, and as the deputies have a question, they can go right to them and ask a question. So, I mean, you know, same with the grants manager, if there's a question, because some of them oversee the title grants, they would go in and deal with the person. So if they were dealing on the salaries of some people, because even though they've been grants, they would still, the salary's still gotta go through the payroll system, so they would have some interaction with them.
So it's, this is kind of, is this pulled from the grants manager or kind of similar to it?
No, the grants manager oversees the twenty million dollars from a higher level. This person actually would be overseeing the payroll of the grants, because the payroll of the grants is not done by the grants manager. It's done, all the payrolls done by a payroll department, and it's all processed through our Munis system. So it's just a matter of how they're charged off in managing that they're charged to the right.
In our budget, where it shows you if it's coming out of the budget or from a grant, and it gives you that?
That's right. So it's title one or title sped two forty, those were they're charging off.
Thank you.
There are any other questions at this time?
No. I just know the question for me.
Any motion to be made, or is it just to be tabled?
Tabled.
Is there a second on the table?
I, I don't know if table on it is appropriate. So I, would I... You know, it's been ten years in this position. It sounds like an important role. You know, Donna, it's, you've been on the committee for a long time. I'm not sure if you have any thoughts with regards to it not being filled for ten years, or if this... Donna?
I'll be, okay.
I can go after you.
Okay, let me answer his question. To be honest with you, I've never had anybody call that they haven't been paid or whatever. And I'm, that, that, that's just answering your question, but I certainly will let, you know, the superintendent.
Well, the direct deposit issue, I don't think had to do with the payroll manager.
No, no, but I said, I said, I never had.
No, no, I was talking to John, sorry, sorry about that.
All right.
So I, I just, I think I want to address what Mrs. Gately was saying at the beginning around concern about positions being proposed that don't necessarily, aren't direct service to students positions. I guess I would go back to what Attorney Nicholson said about the overwhelming percentage of the proposed positions in this budget being, to use his language, student-facing, or I would say, direct service, ninety percent. So I, I think that, one, reflects values, two, really suggests that, you know, this is not a major move with these positions, but we have to build capacity. So this is the first time in a long time that this district has seen an increase as large as we saw. And we really need to take advantage of that, both in addressing students' needs directly, which we did with that ninety percent, but then also building capacity so that the folks who are doing the direct service are also supported and doing that work. And that's everything from being paid appropriately and on time and not having mistakes in that finance department, to support in the classroom, you know, through training and feedback and things of that nature. So I just wanted to put that out there, that you have to, there has to be a balanced approach. And I think we're really addressing the direct service shortages with this budget, but also trying to take some steps forward in building capacity.
Donna? And my, my biggest thing is, I want to see the problem, and then I want to see the solution. And I think that what Kevin had said in the beginning was, you know, that this, this is all on him and, and someone else within the department, and it's, it's been a lot. And it's taken him away from other things that he should be doing or could be doing in a, in a better way. And I think that over the past year, with him working with regards to our issues with the students and the food, we see that when he's involved with something that is under his purview as well in a, in an increased manner, that we see results. So I, I have no, no issues with this, with this position, just based off of his actions throughout the year and what we can see that he's able to do if, if he is given the ability to do so. So I make a motion to accept the position and push it towards the whole committee.
Okay, do I hear a second? Okay. It's no time for discussion, but I'll make a second so that I can have discussion. What we have been, and we have already talked about it at the last meeting, is many of the clerks' jobs have been cut. And that is a huge concern, and it's left, like, one particular school very shorthanded without the clerk. And so, you know, for myself, I'm seeing clerk jobs being taken away to put in management jobs, and it concerns me. So I just, you know, I would like to, you know, I mean, if, if it's, if it's necessary, it's necessary. But also, you know, so aren't the clerical jobs that we have been cutting. So what do we do in that case?
Are you recommending that we restore a particular position?
Yeah, well, I can't really do it at, probably at this time. I mean, he's balancing, you know, he's saying that there's no use for one of those jobs in his, but I'm talking about across the whole system, the clerical. And, you know, I don't know, but I know I have had a lot of calls. Ellen Lorraine has had a lot, a lot of calls in regards to particular jobs that we're cutting out there, that we know it doesn't make sense to have cut them, you know. And, and it's adding a management job, but... Can you understand?
I, I understand.
We're getting the cause for that.
I do, I do. I understand your, your perspective. Respectfully, you know, we, we entrust building leaders to make, to know their buildings well and to make decisions that they think are in the best interest of children first and foremost, and the operation, and the goals that they're trying to accomplish. And I, 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 I'm having trouble embracing the idea that it doesn't make sense, because this is a professional opinion about an operation. But I can also hear the argument that it feels unbalanced if there are positions being proposed and others being closed.
Right.
You know, this being my first time.
You know, I mean, we're just taking, you know, we're taking two middle schools that pretty much have equal number of students in the fourteen hundred range. And, you know, one middle school is gonna operate with three clerks, and another one is being cut and only operating with two. And I truly understand the principal wanting, you know, something that's gonna make her operation better. But to take it out on the back of the clerks, you know, as we're, we're changing, and I can't remember at this time whether that was adding a management job at that school, I'm really not sure. But I'd have to look back if you guys could probably.
Yeah, at that particular school, there were, well, there were a couple of shifts to create three department head positions, which are part management or supervisory and part teaching. So.
Department heads, you know, and I'm not saying that it's not a problem. I'm just saying that it just seems like we're taking it all out on the back of the clerks to add management jobs into the budget. You know, I can honestly say Kevin works diligently, and he does a phenomenal job. And that's why we never have calls about payroll or anything like that. We never, never, never have a problem. And if he's saying that, you know, he's taxed to the, to the limit, and, you know, he has inexperience in the payroll department, you know, that's probably a possibility that it has to happen. I don't even remember the job if it was ten years ago, to be honest with you.
It was a higher level job. It was over a hundred thousand dollars job. I mean, it was Danny Horahan's job. I mean, you remember Daniel Horahan? So that was the position. So I always told you, I try to be fiscal responsible here. That's my job. My job is to spend the taxpayers' money wisely, and I think that's what I'm trying to accomplish here. You know, you don't hear about problems, but we fix them. There are things I have to fix them, but to spend a lot of time fixing things takes me away from other job functions. And I appreciate the comment on the food, but that's time. And, you know, there are other responsibilities that I'm responsible for, and I need to be doing those as well as we, you know, continue to balance the budget every year. And I always say, this week, these last two weeks are probably the most stressful time of the year for me, because everything's closing down, and I have to make sure things are done properly. And I've always worked whatever it takes to get the job done. But I, I have managed, and I respectfully ask for this position because I believe it's needed. I wouldn't ask, and I started by saying a hundred and fifty-nine million dollar budget, and there's two people financially that run this whole system. That's, I think if we were to do a study on other districts, you'd find a lot more people are in central office. If you recall the Tale of Four Cities that we all went to down in Malden, I believe we're seven million dollars underfunded on what we should be on administration. And there was a number of positions, but I think it came up to almost seven million dollars. So I know it's, I've been doing this in three districts twenty years now. And in three years, it always, and as you well know, I was on a school committee, so it is tough to add administrative jobs, because people always say, put it direct services to students, put direct services to students. And as Jared said, I did confirm, yeah, we're about ninety percent of this budget, new positions are going towards students. So I, I think I'd ask you to take that all into context here, is about what we're trying to ask for. I don't, I've been here, you know, twelve, just about twelve years, and I've never asked, I've managed to do it. But we're at a point where we, you know, we've got a lot to do, and there's a lot to keep moving forward. And, you know, I don't want to come here and say, this person's making mistakes. That's my job, is to fix them and make sure, and, you know, correct whatever needs to be corrected. But I think we're at that crossroads where I'm really asking for some assistance to help run financially the system the right way it needs to be. And I hopefully respect that you take that into consideration when you make your vote.
Thank you. Yes, Superintendent.
I can just add, I just confirmed with attorney in my house, in the new business vote to approve the FY twenty budget, there, the committee can make a recommendation that we restore a position.
I think all of us know that at the table, so we'll try to do that.
Just pointing that out.
Do our best. Okay. There are no other questions? Roll call Nancy on that motion?
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Gately?
No.
No. Mr. Sadway?
Yes.
Yes, passed.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
For citizens to express their views on... To have the committee understand numerous points of view. And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing? And if you can, is there anybody who's signing?
Good evening. My name is Jim Kearns and this is Jim Solisi. I'm the executive director of the collaborative and Jim is the finance director who was there, I believe, when the collaborative was founded at Salem State in 1983. And was founded by Professor Frank Sullivan. And at the time, it was when Eisenhower money was flooding into the state and actually all over the country. And it was created for math and science education for teachers and the support for that. In 2003, I took over the collaborative and we've expanded into pretty much all content areas and, and the push in technology. Each year we change. One of the documents that you have in there is our flyer that we use to solicit grants, but within that flyer, you'll notice we have the WISE program. Lynn is an active, up until this year, was an active member of participating in the WISE program. Ten to fifteen girls from each junior high school are allowed to attend. We have an Audubon workshop series at Plum Island where teachers can use their schoolyard as a science lab. And it cuts down on supplies. There's a lot of picture book reading and a lot of connections into the classroom and the curriculum. You'll also see the calculus, statistics, biology, and chemistry practice exam. Lynn was an active member in those programs up until a few years ago. And I believe, I was told that they're now doing that within the school system, but they were very active within that. The program used to be just after school. Teachers' needs have changed over the years and it's now after school, Saturdays, April, February vacations, and summer. We just finished our summer institute today. Over the last two days, we had over a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty teachers participating in workshops, some from Lynn. You'll also notice in that document that the cost for membership, there's two types of membership. One membership is basic and that's eighty cents per student. If you want to take a hazard of a guess what the fee was in 1983, it was eighty cents per student. We have not raised the fee since 1983. The only change in our membership status has been we've added a thousand dollar fee for the teachers to attend most of the workshops at no cost. Now, for Lynn, that, being the larger school system, we actually, when I took over as collaborative executive director, I sort of made an executive decision that actually lowered Lynn's fee. And the premium fee, which would have cost, I think right now you're at about fifteen thousand students, that would have been twelve thousand dollars plus a thousand dollars. It would have been a thirteen thousand dollar cost. We charged Lynn ten thousand dollars and then wherever there was a fee for a course, Lynn teachers were free. So for the last four years, Lynn teachers have not paid a penny for a workshop where other teachers are paying twenty-five dollars and, well, five dollars or twenty-five dollars depending on what the courses were. And you'll see the fee structure on one of the colored documents towards the back, membership So wherever there was a fee there, Lynn teachers were not paying that fee. That was given, we informed those teachers that Lynn paid for that and they were able to attend those workshops at no charge. So the membership for the collaborative, you'll see it, we pretty much have every parochial school on the North Shore and most school systems on the North Shore within the membership. Questions were raised about the number of workshops that we offer and what base they are. This past year, 2018, 2019, you have a document that shows a hundred and ten or a hundred and fifteen workshops that we offered this past year. Those workshops average between two to, two hours, up to fifteen hours. Our online classes are fifteen hours. They're hybrid. And the hybrid online class has one face-to-face meeting. We found that we needed to do the face-to-face meeting for teachers to get comfortable with the platform. They go through the first lesson and as Kathy indicated, there is a lot of work. I get a lot of calls asking for, okay, since I had to do all this work, can I get graduate credit for this? And what we don't offer is graduate credit. There was also a question in terms of are we a member of Salem State? We have been an agency of Salem State since 1983. Our workshops and our program is not listed on the Salem State website because they require for us to have our workshops up there that we need to post those workshops close to six months in advance. And I have teachers submitting workshops to me three weeks out from running the workshop. It would not work. But Salem State has allowed us to have our own website and we worked through that. There are ninety-three presenters now working for the collaborative and their classroom teach, most of them are classroom teachers. I have about three or four retirees. And they're evaluated after they do their presentations. And unless they get a straight five out of five and positive comments, they're not rehired for any other further workshops. So the key end for the collaborative has been low-cost, high-quality professional workshops taught by classroom teachers. They're asked to teach, offer a program of something that works within their classroom that they love doing and they, their students have found success with. And that's been our model. We do not have a lot of overhead. Most of our expenses go towards paying the presenters. We receive all the financial support from Salem State in terms of they handle all of our payroll, they handle all of our deposits, they handle all of our accounting at no charge. To give Jim a desk, fortunately, it used to be in a closet, a closet in a closet in a classroom. He now has a desk in an office area, but there's one desk there that's Jim can call home. I work out of my office at home. The schools that we have as training sites provide us those training sites at no charge. We do not pay custodial fees. So when you look at our overhead, we have two retired department heads earning a stipend that's a shade better than our department head's salary. There are no full-time employees. And let's pass year, I think I totaled it up today, we had seventy-eight thousand dollars that went out to presenters' costs, for presenters' fees. So that's where we're able to keep the costs down and provide the services that we provide and also being able to go thirty-six years without raising our fees.
Have a question?
Sorry. Just one, one last thing. Lynn participation, a few years ago, I was asked to give a list of participants. What I gave was a list of registrations and it did have a lot of people that did not show up for workshops. There were over three hundred and some odd names. Lynn has, Lynn up until this year had the highest number of registrants every year for the past seven or eight years. Lynn also has the highest number of no-shows. Our old system made it very difficult to call through and eliminate the no-shows from our processing list. Our current system does, is able to do that and it's a much more accurate. And so one of the documents in there are the Lynn participants from the summer institute of 2017 through last year, through last summer, or the beginning of last summer. And there were about two hundred and twenty participants. And then there's a little document, a page or so in the end of teachers from Lynn that participated after you dropped out, after you dropped out and after I met with Dr. Taltweiler earlier in the fall. And I allowed those teachers to attend the workshops even though they were not members at no charge. And where you see fifteen hours beside the workshop name of the participant, those are the courses that address the special ed and the ESL requirements for recertification. You'll also see some at sixty-seven and a half. Those are the SEI endorsement classes that your teachers took. All the workshop descriptions are on our website now, so you can actually take a look at each one of these workshops on our website in the descriptions. Open to questions?
Thank you.
Yes, Superintendent Sadoway.
I appreciate the time that you took to come and speak to us about this important collaborative and what it has to offer and what it has offered and what you've done for us in the past. It shouldn't go unnoticed, obviously, you giving free courses and reducing the price is greatly appreciative, so I want to say thank you for that. One of the things that I, I did like to receive from you today was the collaborative membership. And I just thought, you know, this is a Salem State collaborative, you're in Salem. So my, my first thought was to look around the neighboring towns and cities to see if they're members. And they are. You have PBD, you have Salem, you have Marblehead, you have all the bordering cities and towns as members, which is, which is good. Obviously, you want to be a part of something that you can get to for classes, make it convenient for your educators to do that as well. But then I saw that you actually get people from Everett come. Then you have people, and Merrow is also coming to the collaborative and that's, that's, that's good as well. Is that what your, your core is to get to the areas that are close to Salem State? Was that where the idea came from and that's where you're sticking to? Or, you know, because what the administration is saying is, hey, we're the biggest school district. Well, we're the biggest school district closest to Salem, so that makes sense. But we don't have a Worcester because, are you not trying to get Worcester to be a part of the collaboration?
We're retired. I've been asked by the Archdiocese of Boston to provide professional development west of Boston, Boston, and south of Boston. And I just said, I'm getting a part-time salary and I'm retired. We handle the North Shore and we're very comfortable handling the North Shore. We're able to do this with teachers within the North Shore. Expanding beyond this, there are other collaboratives. They charge a lot more. If you were a member of EDCO, you'd be paying, some of my presenters work for EDCO and they're being paid almost three hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
Wow.
I'm paying that same presenter ninety-five dollars an hour because they like our program. And so we're able to charge much less for the workshops. So we just want to concentrate on the North Shore and only work within the North Shore. We do not want to expand beyond what we're capable of doing. We did our training sites, we, in order to help Lynn, we use the Higgins Schools now in PBD as one of our training sites. So we have two, two systems, Lynnfield High School and the Higgins School that were, we thought were beneficial for Lynn teachers to, to get to. In the past, it hasn't happened this past year or two. We used to offer some workshops within Lynn with our presenters, but limited only to Lynn teachers. But we, we were told that we would have to pay custodial fees if we offered other workshops in Lynn and that breaks our financial structure. It doesn't work for us.
Mr. Castellanos.
Thank you for your presentation. I really appreciate you coming in and really, you know, obviously providing us with all these materials. I also want to just point out, we heard an open mic, we heard some really strong testimony on, you know, the benefits of, you know, attending the Salem State Collaborative. I see in your work, your workshop offerings, I was just tallying off, some of the, I think some of the, the current, I feel like the current work being done in social emotional SEL program. And we have social emotional learning through team building, the impact of trauma on learning. I see, you know, I see, you know, this, for me, it's, you guys are evolving with best practice. I think you guys are paying attention. I appreciate that. I think when you're locating present, presenters and you're saying that you're getting, when you say you're quote-for-quote high quality for low cost, I appreciate that. That's very important, especially when you, you know, we are trying to, you know, we're trying to expose our professional, our PD, you know, expansion in a way where we can afford it. It's, I got a kind of a question as well for the, the membership. Part of the, the grant opportunities, could you expand more on that? Like, what does that entail in terms of grant opportunity? What are some opportunities that you guys could provide a district like LIN?
No, no.
What is that?
The grant opportunities is that we're, we're seeking grants from different companies, and so these are their opportunities that they could help us out and sponsor a program.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's not us.
Yeah, I just wanted to clear that up. Thank you.
Yes, Attorney Nicholson.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight and for the presentation. I think one of the questions I had, it sounds like we, the fee is based on the number of students, you know, and LIN gets a discount, but the, the services, these workshops, but the fee is the same regardless of how many people actually go to the workshops. Would you, have you contemplated, or would you be willing to contemplate a fee structure where the, a district would pay based on how many teachers go and take advantage of the workshop?
We need to, in order to make this financially work, we need to be guaranteed in the beginning of the year, funding that supports this, you know. A total membership fee that comes in is 110,000, $120,000 this year from all the member districts. And so to leave it wide open, I, to be able to, you know, I know under that $120,000, the workshops that we'll run, I'll bring in about $30,000 to $40,000 in fees from participants, which ends up covering the $80,000, close to $80,000 that went to the presenters and our two salaries. So that variable just wouldn't work for us.
I mean, even if you could structure where some part of it is fixed and some part of it's variable.
I haven't raised that fee in 35, since eight, my 15 years as, as the director. It's as low as we can go. I could, I, we could start off at the 80 cents plus your number of participants, but, you know, the 80, 80 cents is really the low point that we could go at.
Ms. Gailey.
You said that some teachers took it, took the courses even though we're not in the collaborative, and I was wondering how much they had to pay to take your course.
I actually, even today, there were two, three LIN teachers that were there. I charged them the basic member rate to rather than the $80 for the day, they were only paid 25.
Okay. But how much would the course be?
If they had not taken the.
Like, if they're not in this at all and they just decide to sign up.
It would have been the $80 today.
Okay. Only $80, that's pretty darn cheap. I'm looking at all the LIN teachers, all of these LIN teachers.
Yes.
And I see on, Dr. Tutwiler, are you on this list?
Am I?
Yes.
You took an SEI, you now is online.
Oh, oh, there was a SEI class that I registered for.
Oh.
But then I got hired. Where I'm sitting right now. I'm like.
As I said, so, you know, that we had pointed out, we got rid of most of the ones that didn't attend.
But that raises the question, though. If I'm on there and I didn't take the course, I thought these were people who took the course.
We cleaned up as much as we could. We did not get rid of everybody that was.
Oh, okay.
That was table. And so, so like, we used to average 300 and something, that's why it's down to about 220. So anybody who sent an email saying they were out, they were dropped from the class.
Okay.
Okay, can I continue? And so, Dr. Tutwiler, here you are, you promised you'd take one of these courses, but, so now you're still on the book.
That was a year ago.
Now, yeah, now you're going to take that course.
But I, I do want to just not beat at that horse. That is concerning about the veracity of the names on the list. If I'm on there and I didn't take it, and you're presenting that these are people who took, you fixed the system and you were able to.
There were, there were names that we cleared off.
Okay.
That you did, yeah.
But it's hard to get rid of everybody that does not.
Understood.
Show up.
Fair enough.
So I want to speak to the fact that I am, I am a premium member at the place where I work part-time, and I took a wonderful course on Google Tools for the SE.
SEI.
SEI course with Rochelle.
Rochelle Cooper, who is also a MasQ presenter.
Yes, and it was excellent. I want the committee to know it was an excellent course, and I plan on taking the, the one about, for disabilities.
Oh.
It meets the needs for my recertification. So I, I can't thank you enough for coming here and going over this so that people can see on the committee, that was my whole purpose, of what it is that you offer, because I was not, I botched it. I wasn't doing a very good job. So I just want my whole committee here to see what is actually offered to teachers that cannot, for whatever reason, make it to, you know, our PDP, you know, classes and want to take other classes somewhere, a course somewhere, and they don't have to pay huge costs to college. How much does a college course cost now?
Per credit, it could be 1,500 or, or more.
These aren't called, it's not equivalent.
That's for graduate credits, which is a different, different thing.
But even for PDPs, it's a lot.
What I am willing to do, Mr. Nicholson, is for next year, for a year, I will give LIN the same rates that they had, or the same program, which is actually a premium plus, for $7,500 next year. So it drops the fee down by $2,500, but I'll do it for the year. And if I could work with Dr. Tutwiler and Ms. Powers on sort of addressing some of the things that I think Kathy had mentioned and encouraging it, we'll not be able to eliminate every no-show from LIN. And that, there's a lot of paperwork involved here with only two of us. But there can be a better accounting on, on LIN participation. But that's an offer I can make. But I would make it for the coming year and see how it goes, and then hopefully we can go back to the original 10,000.
Is that the 7,500 plus the 1,000?
Nope. It'll be 7,500. So it's 50 cents per student, premium plus.
Okay. Thank you.
Premium plus?
Premium plus. The LIN teachers will not have to pay a penny.
Are there any other questions at the table? Yes, Attorney Nicholson.
One of the other things we talked about last time was the, a program for students to visit Salem State Science.
WISE.
WISE, yeah.
Women in Science and Engineering.
That would include, you would be back as a WISE, a WISE school, and your junior highs would allow the students to come again.
And how many students is that for?
Jim runs a WISE program.
Twelve from each middle school. Our schools, our school system, we would love to have more, but we get close to 500 of the old school girls. Place is packed.
Can I input for some?
Yes, Ms. Gailey.
The women in science, when I, I was teaching middle school not too long ago, 2013, we would have a bus, Mr. Nicholson, and we would go, they'd pick us up at Pickery, we'd go over to Breed, then we'd go over to Thurgood Marshall, and we would take all these girls over to Salem State, and they would meet with professors from Salem State, and they would do different activities. They could choose if they wanted to measure DNA, if they wanted to do this. It was a wonderful program that they appreciated and they enjoyed, and they worked hard because they got chosen to go to that program, and they did not get chosen for the MIT one.
Does that not, sorry, Donna?
It's okay, yes, Attorney.
Does that not include Factual Larry or the Discovery? Now that we have the Discovery, would it include those programs too?
Yes.
With the MIT?
No, for, for the WISE. When they say middle schools, isn't Factual Larry still considered a middle school, and now Tech is technically?
But the number of stu, I mean, I would hope that they would be included, but the number of middle school students there, there's probably 10.
That would be up to date.
It's very small.
Not, not Tech, no?
But the Discovery Academy, sure, sure.
But it will now.
Do we have any other questions down the row here?
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Unfinished business, there's nothing under unfinished business, I'm assuming. Under new business, field trip request for LVTI to Southern Maine Community College on June 25, 2019.
I make a motion. Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Is this the one that we got an email on? Okay. I make a motion to approve the LVTI to Southern Maine Community College that took place on June 25, 2019.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, Nancy.
Ms. Castellanos.
Yes.
Ms. Capola.
Yes.
Mr. Ford absent, Ms. Gailey.
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson.
Yes.
Sadoway.
Yes.
Merricket.
And B has been removed.
It has?
Yes, it's been removed by Mr. McHugh.
Do you mean to?
Budget transfer, health insurance agreement. Is that correct?
I'm all set.
It's all set. He doesn't need a budget transfer.
Okay.
Okay. And then, under C, vote to proceed with the MAS C to update the policy manual. Yes, Attorney Nicholson.
Thank you. So, as you know, we've talked about this at a few different meetings now, the, this would be to hire the Mass Association of School Committee to update our policies working with us. We got a presentation at the last meeting from MAS C about the service, and I, and I had an opportunity to ask and answer questions. So unless anyone had other sort of thoughts or questions tonight, I'd like to make a motion for us to, to hire the MAS C to update our policy.
I'll second it.
Um, sorry. I'm sorry. I just wanted to reiterate to, to the committee, I have in my office the old policy of the, not the old policy, the current policy that was from 1970s, and every time I look at it, it, it's dreadful. It, it's, it's, we need this, and I'm happy that there was a solution to our problem, and it's affordable, and one thing that I did want to see is, are we, are we going to need to break it up over three years, or is it something that we can pay for in one swoop? Is that something that we need to talk about?
We have the option to discuss that with him once you move forward. We'll have that discussion.
Okay.
If we can pay it out, they offered the three-year payment, you know, we'd go with that method, or we can pay it all at once.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions from me.
Yes, Mr. Castellanos.
Does that include, I remember, if I recall, we're going to host it, so we're going to go at the higher.
I don't think we went with that one.
So which one?
It's going to be up to you. I'm not sure exactly, you kind of talked about it, and I'm not sure if we're going to host it or we're just going to get the hard copy at this point. So whatever you, whatever you want, we will move forward with them on that.
I mean, I would suggest editing the policies and then deciding if we want to host it.
Is there a discount if we did everything at once, I think?
There was a discount. I believe there was. If you, when you initially sign up, there was a discount if you wanted them to host it, like the one, you know, other than that, you could still do it. It wasn't, either way, it wasn't a substantial amount of money. I, I think getting it done is probably the most important thing, you know, versus, it would only be the decision of the committee as an annual cost, which would have been a budget for the hosting. I don't have the doll in front of me, she gave it to us at meeting. If you wanted it, then we just budged for every year, because really, it wouldn't be, probably it'll take almost this school year coming. I imagine you get through all the edits and everything else, so you probably wouldn't even have to incur that hosting cost until next year's budget if you wanted to, you know, tell her we're going to do that at this point.
And slightly over 1,000, I think, a year for the hosting.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's a, it's an attractive option. I just, I wonder if there's, if there's, if we're doing something else on that website and, and we wanted to have our own system, then, and it didn't sort of mesh, taking that decision out without talking to our web people would be, would be my issue with that. And I have a feeling that if we really talk to MAS C about it, they might be willing to, to let us select a package if that's what we end up doing anyway.
So what's the motion, then?
The motion would be to hire them for the policy manual update.
And that was second.
Yes. Okay, so are there any other discussion at the table? Roll call, please.
Ms. Castellanos.
Yes.
Ms. Capola.
Yes.
Mr. Ford absent, Ms. Gailey.
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson.
Yes.
Ms. Sadoway.
Yes.
And Ms. McGee absent.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is vote to approve the FY '20 budget. It's, should we do a motion first and then have discussion? Somebody like to make a motion and then second?
Make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2020 budget.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, please. Yes, Attorney Sadoway.
Dr. Tutwiler, we had two means of discussions. One was when we were doing the postings in our subcommittee, and we talked about a clerk's position, and when you look at the populations of each school and the need of the other schools, you know, I kind of feel for what Donna's saying. In addition to that, we just had someone come in and reduce the price to a product that I, I believe is a substantial reduction for something that could benefit our teachers if, if we do it right. What are your responses to those, or what are your thoughts with regards to that? We can start with at least the position. I know you're going to probably reiterate yourself with, with the building being the best purview is the principle.
I, I said that only to underscore that it wasn't a decision that was made without thought and consideration around the operation of the building. But, you know, if you, and, and being new at this, if, if the wish of the committee is to restore that position, there are TBDs. I assume that I would just take one of those TBDs out and restore the clerical position at that school. Relative to the other question, in our last meeting on the 13th, I committed to having another discussion, taking another look. I stand by that commitment.
You haven't done that yet. It's, I know it's only been a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Do I make that motion for the restoring of the position now?
Yeah, is it in a motion form or just in?
Motion form to increase the line item.
Your line item.
Position.
Okay.
You have to take another line item. You have to reduce another line item. Balance budget.
You, I don't have my book with me.
Okay. I do.
Okay.
Perhaps you'll get a recommendation from Mr. McHugh.
Yeah. Mr. McHugh?
Do you have a recommendation first?
Yes.
Where we can take it from?
We're going to remove the funds needed from the superintendent's to-be-determined line to the Breed Middle School clerical line. I'm trying to get you want the exact dollars, give me one second.
Does he need that? The exact dollar amount?
Did you hear that, Attorney?
I did.
Sadoway?
Yep. So I make a, a motion to restore.
Are we in the middle of a motion?
Yes.
Want me to repeat it?
To approve the FY '20 budget.
We've already, we've already done that, but within this, we're.
No, they haven't.
That's motion on the floor. Yeah, this is a, this is a sub.
They haven't got a discussion.
So we're only in discussion.
Okay.
And we're also going to make a correction to the motion, the original motion at some point.
So what?
I just had a question.
Correction on the motion.
Oh, yeah, we can do that. We can, I mean, so the, the motion's going to read, to accept the fiscal year '20 school budget in the amount of, you got it?
Hundred.
Yeah. 159,300,000.
I was a, I never had to do that. Okay. That's from Ms. Sadoway.
So the most, the next motion would be to reduce the superintendent's to-be-determined positions by the amount of 59,794 and restore that. positions by the amount of fifty-nine thousand, seven ninety-four and restore that to the Breed Middle School clerical line.
Ms. Jarrett has...
I'm gonna make a motion to amend my original motion on the table.
Amend the line item of the proposed budget.
Yeah.
In the manner that Mr. McHugh...
Yeah, and I'd like to ask you a question with that before we... Then that's...
Have to amend the original.
Attorney Shatterman's motion, right?
Whatever the, whoever made the motion to accept the budget, that motion has to be amended by changing that line item.
Okay, but that would have to pass first before we amend it.
Amendment first, then the...
Right.
Right.
Okay.
So no vote until we amend anything we're remending?
What are you gonna do?
So on the, on the Breed clerical position, I, I'd like to hear, I think that it's good that we have these TBDs because we don't know what's gonna happen over the summer with enrollment and students changing buildings or increases enrollment and it gives us some flexibility for those, for those student-facing roles. You know, we think about class sizes and unpredictability. I absolutely have a lot of sympathy for the, for the clerks who are left with, who anticipate being left with more work than is reasonable and fair and Breed. I understand the administration's point of view that, you know, the principal's asked for this and it's their professional opinion. I think we, I would like to hear, I think that, I understand that that's the principal's role is to plan their building and our role is to understand that and to ultimately approve it. So I'd like, if there's more available, I'd like to hear more what the principal's rationale was for not needing a clerk beyond the fact that that was what the principal decided.
So the recommendation came from a standpoint of understanding the workflow in the main, in that office and feeling confident that the office could be managed appropriately with sustaining that cut. And that came as part of a proposal wherein there was prioritizing other needs within the building. So to put it sort of plainly, I think that we can manage in this space with this number of full-time equivalents, so I'm willing to give something up because I feel that there's a stronger need in my building for these full-time equivalents.
Which are what? Sorry.
So that was the sped, special education, science, no, excuse me, special education, math and, thank you, and ELA department chairs, where there was, you know, content expertise, direct services to students through instruction, support, content support for teachers in the classroom and not something that, I don't know if it's ever been there, but at least not in recent memory, a structure in the middle schools in the city.
Okay, thank you. I mean, my inclination would be to, we don't know yet what the, what it's gonna look like when there are department heads, it's gonna take some administrative burden off the front office presumably, if they're, if they're adding some administrative time. You know, I think it's important to remember here that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but we're not, the clerk is going to still be employed with the Olympic Schools, it's just wouldn't be at Breed.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Gately?
So, let me get this right. So with those positions coming on, they're gonna be doing clerical work?
No, no.
No, so that's what I didn't think. So that's where I'm trying to understand this because they're losing one. What I don't wanna happen is next fall to be told afterwards, say, "Hey, we need a clerical position" and then we have to throw it in.
Right.
That's all.
So in my initial explanation, I said that there's an understanding of the workflow in that office and a belief that the staffing, less one, can handle that workflow. What Attorney Nicholson was suggesting, which I don't think is untrue, there might be additional administrative tasks or responsibilities that are alleviated by having additional administrative capacity in the building.
If I can...
But that is not part of the initial rationale, I just wanna be clear.
If I can just chime in, I understand that the workflow of the, of the department is important to know and we've been reached, at least I've been, all three of them reached out to me and told me that the work is there and that it's gonna be of detriment to the department. If they're doing the work, it's kinda hard not to listen to what they're saying. And I appreciate what you said, Dr. Tuttwiler, when you said it can come from this line to this line because again, it's gonna impact the school, it's gonna impact the work in that school and that's not an issue. But again, when we spoke last year, you know, I'm all about the equity, you know, not everyone needs to be equal, but this job is a very important job. These are the people that kids see when they go to the office every morning and there's work that needs to be done and I believe that it's a, it's an important position to keep. That's where I stand.
Yes, Attorney Nicholson?
Thank you. I, do we, can you remind me how many TBDs we had last year and whether we would still be covered for that?
Right, I think I entered the year, and Mr. McHugh will have to keep me honest with two.
So we, so we would still have, we would have three this time?
Uh...
Change?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Is that correct, Mr. McHugh?
I'm checking.
Because we're only taking a certain amount of money from it, fifty-nine thousand.
That's correct. You're not taking...
So it's not gonna be a total position?
Okay.
Leftover that stay available in the line. There's four currently in this year's budget, so...
There was two last time.
Yeah, there's probably, there's only a few last year, we had a tight budget last year.
To be clear, however, as Attorney Nicholson pointed out, I mean, you, districts need that flexibility to bring on additional teachers, who knows what the summer holds in terms of registrations and as was the case this year, I don't recall if we necessarily need to put an additional teacher on, but we did put a social worker on immediately with one of those TBDs. Actually, I think one was a therapist and one was a social worker, if I recall correctly. So we have that flexibility and quite frankly, that was my mindset going into next year with those four TBDs. Classroom first and if there's no need there, then I'm looking at social and emotional support.
And you've already created thirty new positions that are in this budget, right?
Total is sixty.
Sixty, and it's in the budget? Okay.
I have a question, only because I don't know where Attorney Nicholson was going with this, but Breed, as of May 1st, had 1,425 students and Marshall had 1,350. So even if we lost students, what is the amount that we're, we're gonna be losing?
Yeah, when I was talking about enrollment, I just meant if we had the particular classes that were high and therefore you wanted to put teachers there, and like, and not necessarily in the middle schools, but anywhere in the district.
Yeah, and as far as explaining the difference, if, what would be the difference in paperwork between Marshall and Breed? Because what you're stating is there'd be a difference in maybe what they have to do at Marshall compared to what you have to do at Breed. I can't imagine it, but I'd like to hear what it is.
I can't speak intelligently about the inner workings of the two offices. I rely on the principals to tell me what they need and to propose or present a budget based on...
I understand. And I said before, I'm, I'm not opposed to having her have that support. I think it was department heads she was asking for.
That's correct.
So I'm not opposed to that. I'm just saying that I don't think they're cutting the clerical.
I respect that.
I'm not opposed to it and that's it. I mean, I, I don't even know where I got this, but I have the three different clerks and what, they all do different things, you know, in the school. So it's not like, so in other words, if one clerk is gone, then the duties of the third clerk gets distributed.
But with all due respect, I mean, I don't know what's on that list, I don't know how much time each one of those tasks requires, one of them might take five minutes, I don't know and I don't, I've not seen the list. You all have the latitude to move one TBD to that position and I respect that if that's the wish.
Because... Yes, Ms. Gately?
As, as Mrs. Capola was talking, I flipped over to Thurgood Marshall, which is about the same size, that did add those two new department heads and they still have three clerks. So it's like, it's not that consistent and Pickering has two. When I look at the clerk numbers, it's like, I would think that Breed would have the same amount of work for a clerical as, as Thurgood Marshall.
Okay.
And I think Dr. Tuttwiler has come to...
Yeah, I mean, you can make four different ways. You know what I mean?
So I think it's...
Well, I'm trying to support you, but...
It's, and you know, obviously, we like to go into these things without any surprises and, you know, as much as a team as possible and sometimes we're not always gonna see eye to eye, but I believe Jarrett has to correct the original motion for the budget and then we can start doing these things.
But I think, I think I did that, but there was a motion to amend the original motion to accept the fiscal year 2020 school's budget in the amount of 159 million, three hundred thousand.
And then Kevin had referenced what we need to do to reinstate the clerical position in Breed and...
That's to remove from the superintendent's salary TBD line, fifty-nine thousand, seven ninety-four, to the Breed clerical salary line.
And that's the motion that I'm putting forward to the committee.
I just missed that.
It needs to be a second.
Second.
Ms. Castellanos?
Please.
Excuse me, yes?
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford? Absent, Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadaway?
Yes.
Mayor absent.
Is there, yes, Ms. Gately?
Okay, so I would like to ask Dr. Tuttwiler if he would restore the Salem State Collaborative for the amount of 7,512 budget this year.
That's out of order.
What?
I'm sorry Attorney, I can't hear you.
That would be out of order because that professional development is solely within the province of the superintendent of schools. If the motion is to recommend the superintendent that he do that, that would be in order.
Okay, that's basically what I want.
To mandate a change, submit a G R P.
Okay.
Well, I would like to ask you if you would want to. I've talked to you about this several times anyways, so if you would restore that, I would appreciate that. That's up to you. We've talked about this before and I'm not going to put it to a motion, but it's just something that I think would be good for our staff.
Yes.
I will uphold my commitment and I will reach out to Mr. Kearns and we'll sit down and have a conversation.
And then will you get back to me?
Oh, yeah, it's fine.
I'll get back to everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else in the budget that we'll have concerns with or questions on? It's pretty much when we finish here and we vote on that budget, we never have a moment to speak on it again or do anything with it. So, yes, Mr. Castellanos?
So, so I know we, we just, you know, we reviewed the positions from the personnel subcommittee, it's, you know, I did my due diligence, I appreciate the hard work that was put into that, all, all positions. It's a lot of money on the table, really big decisions that have to be made. Obviously, you know, there's, there's a lot of need in the district and with your, you know, the leadership that you guys have as a team and I appreciate all the efforts being made. It's just, one of those positions, and all due for Kevin, I respect, I definitely respect the position that, you know, was brought to the table and, you know, for me, I just wanna add, there is an importance for that position. I understand there's a, there's a need. It just, when I look at seventy-five thousand dollars, I see other ways to utilize that for the year and I really, you know, I would, I wouldn't be opposed, I would like to just add that to all those positions, well, A, B, C, those all have, you know, grant, grant, you know, right, grant, right and responsibility mechanism in those, those job descriptions. Those are returns, I see those as pretty solid investments.
Frank, where are you looking at in the budget?
Excuse me, I'm just, I'm just saying the positions that we're adding to...
Oh, okay.
Excuse me, it's within the, within, I'm talking about the position that we proposed that we're gonna add on. I just wanted to say, just, just in terms of the return, and we, you know, for ten years, Kevin, you did a pretty phenomenal job, you know, and I see the work that you've done. But I just, you know, again, we're low in, you know, again, going back to, I'm gonna say, like I said last week, social workers, crossing guards, teacher raises, pairs, I can go in many different ways to look at seventy-five thousand dollars to be spent and also that clerical job. So I just wanna put that on the record and I will, you know, I will support it because I believe that you guys did your due diligence, I understand that, but I also would like to, you know, bring that out to the light that we do the next, you know, few years, that those positions, you know, and I, and I heard social work is in the, I see, I see the efforts being made, but that's a lot of money that I could see could be spent in other directions. Also, the seventy-five hundred dollar collaborative, I think that's a great investment. I believe there's many different ways to, to think outside the box, to create funds and hopefully Kevin has with this position, if we move forward, that he continues his excellent work, because I agree with Michael, I think when you have that time to focus on the issues and concerns in the district, you do a really good job as well, it's very, very, very well appreciated. And there's nothing, you know, nothing against you, I just, the way I look at that seventy-five thousand dollar line item, I could look at it being spent on, on public safety and I know our law enforcement officials, I know that's their budget, but again, I'm not gonna stop talking about crossing guards because I think that's a high need and I get to see it on a daily basis, the need, I appreciate it, that's just my, my reflection on that.
Donna?
Yes, Attorney?
And those TBDs, when do you typically fill those and if you see that there's no need outside of a social worker at some of our schools, I would be hopeful that that would be a position that we would fill.
Yeah, so typically, I could say historically, at least since I've been here as a deputy superintendent, much of the summer is spent watching registrations and, you know, we work closely with Dave Hegan and we're watching elementary class sizes, we're watching the enrollment at the secondary schools. If there's a need to open a new classroom, you know, K to five or, you know, hire an additional content area teacher at a secondary level, we'll use one of those TBDs. That, that would be the first priority for those. And then if we get to, you know, Labor Day, September, mid-September, into October and it appears that the dust is settling in terms of classrooms and we're stable, then I would use, and if there are remaining TBDs, I would look at social worker, I would look at therapist, I would look at those, those positions for that.
I appreciate that, because, you know, the students have reached out to us and they, they let us know and we understand their concerns, you even brought the figures to us and we spoke about it, so if there's not one... Were you gonna say something?
After you're done.
I'm sorry. If there, if there's not one or two messages that you've heard... I'm sorry. If there, if there's not one or two messages that you've heard from us today is that we really do believe in direct services to our kids and given heed to the voices from our students and our educators, it's important to us. So I appreciate that.
So I, just quickly, I don't want to belabor this. This is a process that spanned probably four months, I'd say. And there were multiple iterations of the budget. I really, you know, when we thought the figure was a certain number, I wish I could show you, and actually I can, the kinds of things that we were intending to do with that in terms of social workers, in terms of therapists. There was guidance, guidance. And then there was, you know, Kathy White had mentioned earlier in terms of one person, and she's right. We have one technology integration specialist. We wanted to expand on that to support teachers with, you know, weaving technology into their instruction in classrooms. They, you know, they need support in that realm. But, you know, as that number shrinks, you really need to focus on what is core. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you for reminding me of guidance.
Is there anything else on the budget? Not, then roll call.
What's the motion?
The motion is to, uh,
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Cassianus?
Yes.
Ms. Coppola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford absent. Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee absent.
We are down to ratification of votes taken in the Personnel Subcommittee. A motion, you want to do it?
Sure.
Attorney Sadway. Okay, great.
There were four votes taken in the Subcommittee, Personnel Subcommittee meeting and the Committee of the Whole on June twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen. Previously, the postings were tabled on the June twentieth, twenty nineteen meeting. The first one was to accept the Assistant Director of English Learner Education, and that was forwarded to the Committee of the Whole. You want me to go through each one and then make?
Yes, why don't we do them one at a time then?
Okay. So I make a motion to accept the Assistant Director of English Learning Education that was approved in the Personnel Subcommittee.
Second. Any discussion? All in?
Ms. Cassianus?
Yes.
Ms. Coppola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford absent. Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee absent.
In the Subcommittee, we made a motion to accept the posting for the Assistant Director of Social Emotional Learning.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cassianus?
Yes.
Ms. Coppola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford absent. Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee absent.
There was a motion to approve the Program Specialists for Special Education out of District with the change to paragraph one of performance responsibilities to include coordinate and monitor. I was waiting to see. I'm speaking very slowly.
Ms. Cassianus?
Yes.
Ms. Coppola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford absent. Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee absent.
There was also a motion to bring to the full committee a position and a job posting for payroll account payable manager.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cassianus?
Yes.
Ms. Coppola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford absent. Ms. Gately?
No.
No. Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Sadway?
Yes.
Yes. Mayor McGee absent.
Move on to the signing of a contract for the School Business Administrator as approved on June thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Does that have to be in the form of a motion?
I make a motion to sign the contract for School Business Administrator as approved on June thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Cassianus?
Yes.
Ms. Coppola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford absent. Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee absent.
Okay, we have five copies that need to be signed, and I'll pass them down.
And the committee sign them.
Do you, you have to wait? Or can you go into the?
Yes.
Wait, okay.
It's like unlimited.
All day. All day. Well, I gotta, I gotta snatch. I could drink a cup and go to bed. Thank you.
Okay. Under Communications and Information Superintendent's Report.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. As this is the last Superintendent's Report of the twenty eighteen nineteen school year, I thought it prudent first to acknowledge the substance of our work together this year. I learned a ton. On Tuesday, you received a document that formally captures what I learned through my entry activities. The document is meant to be accessible not only to you, but also to the community. I will post it on the LPS website after this meeting. I don't think you'll find anything in this document surprising. Much of what I learned through my entry activities, we've been discussing formally in this space over the course of the school year. It seemed prudent, however, to report out on the activities and where the outcomes land in terms of the work and our plans going forward. Clearly laid out in the report is the plan going forward. You can expect a formal presentation on the strategic plan in the fall. The summer's work involves digging into strategic initiatives designed to help us meet the strategic objectives in the plan. We need to develop action plans for each. I'm excited about the work ahead, and I look forward to presenting more formally how it is we intend to go about achieving the strategic objectives in the early fall. Also in your packets, um, that we had put in there this evening, is a report on the common items on the teacher survey we employed this year. In the October twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen meeting, I informed you of our intent to formally gather feedback from teachers at each school via survey. As was communicated that evening, we worked with principals to develop a survey that offered an opportunity to claim several benefits, chief among which was providing teachers with a voice and developing an understanding of how staff is experiencing their professional home. What you have is a collection of the common Likert scale items. Some principals added additional items to gather feedback on initiatives or elements specific to their school. To norm the process, principals shared the results of their survey with their staff, much in the fashion that I'm sharing with you, and discussed a response approach. This was a first go at a uniform feedback approach in the schools. We will reflect both on the process and the outcomes that you have and use both as tools for improvement going forward. June eighteenth marked the end of year two with the uniform pilot at Callahan and Aborn. A formal request has come forward seeking a report. What I have is hardly that, a report, but I can offer you a bit of an update. The program continues in both schools, but in my humble opinion, falls short of fidelity to the ideal. Uniforms in schools are part of the cultural fabric, the makeup, the who, who are we element in school cultures. While I believe the effort has been valiant, I don't think that the pilot has risen to the level of being part and parcel of the school culture at either school. This could be the case due to the optional feature in the pilot. Not every student is required to wear the uniform. In preparation for this evening, I reviewed the parent survey data collected in the twenty sixteen seventeen school year. There was strong support for the pilot at that time. Beyond that, we have anecdotal feedback from the previous principals in school year seventeen eighteen, which was also positive. By way of empirical data, I pulled attendance and discipline data from both schools over the past three years. You have a copy of this. I lost my place. Okay, you have a copy of the data. I acknowledge that there are a number of factors that would influence both in a given year, attendance and discipline. But at a high level, there does not appear to be much of a difference in attendance over the identified years. There are differences in the discipline data, but it's negligible or not reflecting a trend. Both schools are under new leadership, and there was no survey done this year relative to the pilot. In the early fall, in addition to identifying specific criteria for success, which I think is missing, I would recommend surveying students in grade five, the teachers, perhaps as part of their teacher survey, and parents next year to make a determination as to next steps. And I'm interested to hear your feedback on that thought. Perhaps key in this process and everything I just talked about, and what we do as in this organization, is learn. I learned a lot about the community. I learned a lot about our relationship. And I learned a lot about the role of superintendent. I'm excited about the plans related to what was learned. The learning continues. I will continue to learn as a superintendent along with the rest of our community. In the course of that process, I will make mistakes. And it's part of the human condition, I think. When I make one, I'm man enough to acknowledge it and apologize in an effort to repair any harm. I made a mistake recently that calls for a formal apology. At our June thirteenth school committee meeting, there was an agenda item, a presentation by the Lynn Community Health. While I know, while I knew full well with the subject matter of the presentation, you did not. Given the nature of the subject matter, you deserve notice ahead of the meeting. One of our operating protocols that we all agreed to calls for no surprises. I did not behave in keeping with that agreement, and I apologize for that. I'll end this last Superintendent's Report with what my favorite high school history teacher used to call congratsograms. I'd like to offer this coveted prize to the Breed All-Stars Program, which was recognized with a Pillar of Excellence Award from the Addiction Policy Forum in our nation's capital earlier this week. There's pictures on Twitter. Wonderful thing. Congratsogram to Jason McCush, who was named the National Skills USA Advisor of the Year. I need not go into detail. You see what he does both within the school and around the community with Skills USA. And then, and I tried ahead of time to get his name, so I didn't butcher the pronunciation, but I think it's Newbie Reto, the Lynn Tech teacher who recently received an Emmy from the New England Chapter. Is that right? Okay. New England Chapter of the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences for a documentary that he created. Congrats to him. And my best to all for a relaxing summer.
Question? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay. What interests me out of everything you said is the feedback from our faculty. You know, they're in it. They're invested. They deal with our kids. They see things from the bottom to the top. And their feedback is important to you, I'm assuming, as well, to all of us. Were we not able to get this broken down by schools, or you did this intentionally to?
I did that intentionally.
Okay. What bothers me is that, on average, it's between twenty and twenty-two percent of the faculty that were surveyed are disagree or are neutral with the majority of these questions. And these are some pressing questions. If they're getting the support that they need, if they feel like they're a part of the team, these are big things. And that's a large number. If you don't, do you agree that twenty percent are?
Well, if twenty percent are disagree or strongly disagree, that means eighty percent potentially are in the agree, strongly agree. So, I mean, so there's a couple of ways to look at these. And what we've really tried to stress with the principals is like, look for the opportunities to improve. One, a person can walk away from this, you know, especially when you look at the visual and say, hey, we're doing pretty good. Look at all this strongly agree, and look how small, at least visually, the, I actually take it from neutral to, because neutral to me is a disagree. If you're not fully in agreement with something, then you're not, then you're disagreeing. That's my own personal thing. Yeah, we can, we could, you know.
Agree to disagree.
Yeah, sure. We can be neutral about that together. But, you know, we really wanted them to look at the opportunities to improve. And so, for example, if, you know, the one that I, all of these items are important, but all the way down there at the bottom, the second to last, around school culture, when, I mean, and the numbers are relatively low, but when you look at the in, the number of people who, I mean, that's concerning to me, that there's, you know, people who feel like there's, the school culture is not positive.
That, when I saw that, I thought instantly to the SEL presentation we had, which they addressed that part of what they're hoping to do is improve school culture.
Right. And so the individual work of a principal, though, is to dig into that and find out why, and even if it's a small number, to find out why that small number of people perceive the school culture as not being positive. So I did not break it out by school for lots of reasons. One, I sort of want to be consistent with common practice when you're, you want to look at it from on high, and I worry about conclusions being drawn about individual schools that might not be accurate if.
But you have that data, and you're going to use that data however you deem necessary. So as long as the data is broken down somewhere and someone's looking at it.
So I was going to ask you to, go ahead, please.
So Kim Powers and I, as part of our supervision with the schools that we supervise, we saw the results of the individual schools and had conversations with the principals about how are you going to share this? What, you know, what are you going to focus in on? What you're not seeing is there was a whole section of comments that teachers could put in that principals needed to tease through, look for trends, and that when they were sharing back the results, they would talk about what they noticed in, you know, what came out of trend data of reading those comments. And all of the principals that did the surveys did that with their staff.
Were there some principals that didn't do the survey?
There was one. That did not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Just on the faculty survey, I think this is really helpful. It'll be helpful in the absolute responses, but I also think it's great to have a baseline now that we're starting talking, going through the strategic planning process, talking about values, because then we can see how things are moving over time. So it can be hard to interpret the numbers the first time you do something like this. But I think that baseline will be really helpful. And, you know, this is something that I think it's a tool, it's a management tool of many. And it's a great opportunity to have teachers give a direct line of feedback, and we all know how important that is. And it's something I think you had mentioned as we went through the process to decide which direction to go in for leadership in the district, and something I know my colleague, Ms. Gately, has mentioned over the years. And so it's really exciting to see if this comes to fruition, have this, add to this tool to our toolkit in the district. Just because you invited some feedback on the uniform. Um, just because you invited some feedback on the uniform point-
Yep.
I just wanted to, um, well, thank you for the update.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And also mention that I thought all, everything you said about structuring a pilot makes a ton of sense in terms of, you know, clearly defining what the goals are and how to measure that. Um, and, you know, we had on the last committee an ad hoc uniform Subcommittee.
Yep.
Um, Ms. Gately was on as well, and I think, uh, you know, once you've had a chance to, to, to think about structuring the pilot and get whatever feedback that you'd like from that school, it, it would probably be a good use of a Subcommittee meeting to-
Sure.
To, um, struc- to, to, to do that for the next, the next year. Thank you.
Attorney Sadaway? Oh, I thought you had your hand up. Ms. Gately?
Um, Dr. Tewyla, we, um, sat down and talked this week, and, um, I went over the surveys with you, and I'm really glad that you did that, and I'm really, really glad that we have the results in front of me. But I just wanna make sure that, you know, like, it, it's a tool for the principals to actually evaluate themselves, to see how they're being perceived. And I, I hope that in the future, 'cause we talked about one particular school, and I just don't want people in the classroom not to answer honestly. I want them to continue to answer honestly. And to know that this is just for feedback to the principal, to help them to become a better administrator. And that's the whole purpose of this, and I thank you for doing this. I just, we still, it's a work in progress, right?
And we did have conversations with the principals, um, Ms. Powers and I, about, um, you might've had eighty percent that were in agreement or strongly agree, but that twenty percent, it's important. You don't know what you don't know, right? And so you have to acknowledge if something's not working-
You gotta fix it.
That you wanna find out, how do we fix it? And so, um, you know, getting even more feedback from teachers in a non, um, or i- in an anonymous way, and giving them opportunities to share ways that it can be fixed is, is a positive step.
I, I just was concerned because after the, um, surveys went out and the teachers were getting the feedback, two teachers specifically told me right to my face that they will never answer a survey honestly again after what happened to them. So that's why I want the people out there to know that you need to continue to answer it honestly. And things, this is the feedback that the principal needs, so that's why-
I agree.
That's why I brought that up, and thank you, Dr. Tewyla.
Any other questions at the table? Oh, Mr. Castle.
No, sorry. So just more of a, just a reflection on, um, the materials that were presented. I appreciate the survey, um, the, the amount of challenges this district faces. Uh, urban school and, you know, when you, when you look at urban schools, we're faced with such tremendous adversity. It's imperative that leadership stays collaborative. Like, I see, uh, as you just mentioned, like, we're nobody's perfect. Uh, we all need to learn something one way or another, there's a need somewhere. Um, and I, and when I reflect out as my experiences through, um, my first year on the, a- as a school committee member, um, as you could see, all my colleagues are very passionate about Lynn Public Schools. I think a lot of us are very passionate about students' needs, um, and the leadership involved with making these decisions. It's definitely something that has been challenging, but very rewarded. Um, I'm speaking on my behalf with my experiences with, uh, when you bring to the table, um, some of your goals and what your vision was, and wha- I, I wanna say our vision.
True.
'Cause I, I think, I think a lot of that was, uh, in, in the time that we spent together, a lot of us really, uh, got to work together and get to know each other.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and I think as a, as a Superintendent, as a new, uh, Superintendent, uh, you did a, a phenomenal, a phenomenal job on stepping up to a district that, um, definitely needed some change. Um, and then there's definitely, there's moments where I got to, um, hear stories of, of, from, from students and parents and teachers that were in very strong support and very, uh, positive.
Thank you.
My experiences in the strategic planning, uh, process was very eye-opening for me, um, as well as my experiences going to New York with the Lynn Teachers Union. Um, I, I can't, I can't muster up how much respect I have for the public educator, the people who are in our school system that really get it done. The people who don't get recognized every day, uh, and the leadership, like you said, those principals, from, from the whole operation, top and do- the top to bottom. Um, it's, it's such a, a, a wonderful sight to see on graduation day, when you get to see those faces and those families of first-generation students achieve those milestones. 'Cause I believe, uh, the work that we all do together, everyone here at this table, uh, we, we want the best for our students, and we are going to keep working together, and we are gonna keep, uh, pushing the district forward, and we are going to be making tough decisions. But we're gonna do it together, and I end with really the, uh, it's a Frank Warren quote. It's, um, it was the, i- i- it was the broken child that the world almost broke that growl, grows up to save it. And I believe that. I believe a lot of us at the table have a lot to, uh, to provide our constituents, and, um, we wouldn't be able to do it without them, and that's why we're here. Um, we entrust you and the leadership that you guys provide, and it's been really an honor to share that, uh, that, this platform with my colleagues, and it's been really rewarding, and I look forward to, uh, moving this district forward, and thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, appreciate it.
Um, before we make a motion to adjourn, um, I, in the past, I've asked about when people, um, are leaving our district. Um, in particular resignations.
Yeah.
Um, you know, an exit.
Mm-hmm. Interview.
Interview, really. Um, because I think that's really, really important.
Mm-hmm.
I noticed on the back of our sheets, three of them were in the Special Ed Department, and one was a speech therapist.
Mm-hmm.
And those are really hard to come by, so, you know, we, we should really know why they're leaving. And still, also give our retirees that opportunity to let us know what they think's working and what, what they think maybe isn't working for us, and, or what, what they could, you know, suggest that would make a difference.
Agreed.
Okay, great.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Great.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Good job, guys.
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Thank you.